Three sets of calls to the visit with our financial advisor and architects. And we're going back to item six, public hearing, courthouse act one, two, and three. We're basically looking at the different things, where we're at. And we've spent something over $500,000 in already. And there's a possibility that instead of going with the eight point five, it might work very well to go with the eight. And that's good to me. So that just, you know, just discussion and looking at things to kind of understand what the thing was. And so that's basically worth that. Did any of y'all have a question for Mr. Henderson while he's here?
Out of the interest rates going up. Interest rates are getting more and more volatile, Commissioner. The Federal Reserve President Bernanke indicated that at a meeting about a month ago, that QE2, which is quantitative easing, which is a Federal Reserve Bank program of buying fixed income securities in the secondary market as a way of stabilizing interest rates, they've been buying to the tune of about 80 billion a month for about a year and a half. That had been anticipated last into the second or third quarter of 2014. He announced last month that it's going to end by the end of this year, end of 2013, and was a little kind of vague as to exactly what his definition of the end of 2013 was then. So consequently, that's caused a lot of volatility in interest rates. And we've seen interest rates go up over half a point thus in the last thirty days. Now, does that mean that we have a definitive trajectory up? It's too early to tell, but interest rates are definitely up.
What we're doing now, what we had talked before about expecting to be able to sell the bonds at under 3%, or, you know, for sake of being conservative, we're now, you know, modeling at 3.5%. So now, obviously, now, interest rates change every day. We can't guarantee until we get to that point what those rates will be. Just be reassured, as we talked about before, when the Commissioners Court takes the initiative of action to actually issue the certificates, the interest rates will be locked in at that point. You will know what they are before you take action.
That is a concern because the interest rates have been down for so long. And just with economic situations with the federal government, at some point, I anticipate that they're going to start to really go the other direction.
One thing, though, we want to understand is that we have got 8 million and a half. And the bonds have been sold. And up to that point, we can come off of that, like to the eight. But once they're sold, we're locked into that amount. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I've got another question on that resolution. We've given a lot of calls with people concerning that resolution, saying, you know, for the different projects that we had, there's two of them that were added for road and bridge and one for animal shelter.
Yes.
How does that work with that $8 million that is not even that many?
Well, as we discussed when we had our workshop discussion, the primary projects that are at hand is courthouse restoration, the law enforcement center, and the library. And during our discussion, the question came up, we haven't gotten firm bids for those projects yet, and what happens if we have extra money? Since we can't pay the money back, because as the judge just noted, it would be locked in at that rate for at least a period of ten years, the question came up, can we spend the money for other projects? And the answer is yes, so long as we have notified the public in that resolution what those other projects might be. So the Commissioners Court decided that time to add roads and animal shelter, just as kind of contingency projects in the event that there's money left over from the three primary projects. If we lower the amount of debt from 8.5 million to eight, there's going to be less chance of there being surplus monies available for those projects. But the county, as we also discussed at that workshop, has got some undesignated, or, yeah, undesignated reserve funds. And those monies could be spent at the Commissioners Court's discretion for animal shelter projects or road projects, as the court felt was necessary for the benefit of the community.
I've had a number of questions along that line, too. And again, the reason those two were specifically listed is that we recognize that animal control is an important issue to the county. It's something that we've looked at for a while. And we recognize that maintenance of our existing pavement needs to be dealt with along with, you know, more pavement. And so those are two important items to me, and I think to everyone here at Commissioners Court, that we know that in time, we're going to have to deal with. And that's why they were listed, is that, again, if there was additional funds, that's where we felt we wanted them to go.
Along those same lines, and this is more communication to the public than to right now, to deal with animal shelter, that I've had some calls to, and particularly this anxiety that you're going to do it. And I've told them, I said, well, that's contingency, and it was based on this. I said, however, the mayors that I have talked to are all very much in favor of it. And that there's, that we can put a workshop together with them. My contingency always has been that at some point in time, we're going to have to have animal control. The further down the road we kick it, the more tax money we save because it's expensive. But it, as it looms larger and larger with people's minds out here, we work with all five entities to bring up something together to work with it, implement the $5 licensing fee, and run it properly, set it up properly. It may not be that expensive a thing to execute for anybody and have 24-hour coverage, basically.
And I know you recall, Judge, probably four years ago, might be five, I introduced animal control into the budget, and it made it to the time that we started whittling down. And this year, we have so many things that we've had to deal with, particularly with the courthouse situation, that we haven't been able to address it. I plan, and I may not be the one, maybe someone else here, but I plan to see that it's introduced into the budget next year. Whether it makes it through or not remains to be seen, but it's time that we...
Well, I think the key is between now and next year, to put a, to gather with all the cities and come up with some plan, because just implementing it at lucky times will not get it done, you know?
And as we go forward, I'm willing to do anything that you might want done, Judge, from the standpoint of making that happen with the mayors. By lowering this, do you feel like, I mean, I'm all for lowering this total project budget amount, we won't be in trouble, you know?
The impact of lowering the bond issue size from 8.5 to 8 million is going to be effectively to reduce, unless we do get very attractive bids on the projects, is going to be to effectively reduce your undesignated reserve funds, which the county has got, you know, adequate reserves. So I don't think that it would be a problem to do that. It would, however, though, you know, obviously reduce the amount of money available for whatever additional capital projects Commissioners Court feels like they need to undertake, such as the road projects.
I'm just concerned about the three projects.
No, yes, sir. And as we discussed in our workshop meeting, even though interest rates have gone up half a point, even at 3.5%, this is still an attractive interest rate environment compared to, say, the average of the last 20 years. So if you have identifiable projects, you know, that you feel like need to be done, it might still be advantageous time to borrow money. But we don't have to make that decision today. Hopefully, your architect will have a better handle on what the licensing bids would look like before we actually sell the debt.
Thank you very much. Lindsey, uh, what was going on? We was talking about the interviews of the people, and this is a personal thing, so I, but I don't have to be here, but I'm going on vacation Thursday, the next Thursday. Is that going to interfere with that, or can we set it up sometime?
No, we can set it before that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Lindsey, or Henderson?
No, you're leaving Thursday? We're having a party Friday.
It'd be dope.
I'm sure.
Well, there are no other questions.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Commissioner.
Hey, Adam May, Discuss and Take Action, Kinetics Consulting LLC, mechanical plumbing and electrical design, scope of the works of the Willa County Courthouse in Floridaville, Texas, proposed.
Okay. This is for the, this will be the last, I think the last consulting we have in the office. What this is, is the actual design, so it's for the HAC system for the old courthouse. We've looked at, tried to legalize what we've got, so we've got the, the actual plumbing engineer will actually put that design together for us. We've already got interior layout based on our meetings of how we like the rooms to be, but also we've got to facilitate the design. That design section of work, the drawings, we're not going without drawings, which provide part of it, for the interior work.
Any questions, comments?
And that number of judges also included as part of that estimate that we had for costs, we had to save the costs.
Okay. And this is not for all three phases, or just...
That one engineer does the whole thing. So, and it's just, we've already got this building sorted. This is for the, just the courthouse, the old courthouse.
The old courthouse?
Yeah.
And that's within that engineering part of the...
Yes.
...sludge part?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll take the mic, I'll take it. All right. Just so everybody's on the same page, and Thoron said in a meeting that he probably going to have to visit with his own James, no one turned in a request for qualifications as far as the courthouse foundation, and as far as him approaching some people to do this, what we're looking at. So that's, that's one thing that, just so everybody's on the same page, is not, is um, can be handled.
That's something that we need, Dana, need to get a view on, so we can just see the best mechanics of that sort of adjust that, to address that. We have some we know that can do the work, because they're the ones that have to put the price together. And they're, we're knowing, because we know that it has expenses during it, we just need to make sure we get the eyes on it at this cost.
And just so everything can go forward, and everybody knows what's going on. Anything else, anybody? We're still on open public hearings, so if anybody has a comment, question, it's outside. All right. Moving on to item nine, ESD number three, annual outage waiver for county auditor.
Uh, that was Terry Wolf. She called me, and she said she wanted to put this on the agenda. She's not going to be present on a statement in behalf of it. I believe that there is a waiver, and she just wanted to make sure that it was entered in the record. Yes.
She contacted me, and I suggested that she go ahead and put it on here, so that they have received a waiver, so that it was officially put into the minutes.
I have a copy of the letter, you know, if you may. Please have it.
Voting Commission, item 10, Mariah's office. Thank you.
And that's basically because they didn't have a warrant.
Item 10, Discuss and Take Action, 2014 holidays and paydays. Everybody have a copy of it?
I have 45 holidays. 18 paydays.
Do what now?
I was just putting in my request.
Denied?
Denied.
It looks pretty standard to me, but...
Well, Doug, we're adding two at the holidays, is that it? What the reason on adding those two?
What two are we adding?
Well, we're adding New Year's Eve, and then we're adding another day on Christmas. We're having three days instead of two days.
We have thirteen, Mr. Anderson.
We're adding two days, I think.
And that's going to be part of the... That's going to be a group thing.
Well, like on, on Christmas.
I need a copy of the old holiday.
I have a copy of the slide, you can use that. Oh, okay.
And then on New Year's Eve, I mean, we're off Tuesday and Wednesday.
We're working Monday and Tuesday.
That's what I'm saying, of the different of that date. We never did for New Year's Eve. Last year we did, because it fell on, I think it was on a Thursday, or something like that.
Monday.
Monday.
Monday, we talked Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah. But I think we're adding too many holidays already, you know?
Oh.
Well, I mean, it's just because the deal is with that, especially for the Sheriff's Department, they're, they get tied up, and they add more hours to their comp time, so...
I can see some Christmas and New Year's Eve. I can see deleting New Year's Eve.
Yeah.
The Christmas school thing is one of those deals that...
Well, I think...
It's free to...
Yeah, I understand.
That's three days.
But you know, but the way it falls, you know that no one's going to be here on Friday, and no one's going to come.
No, but I think, I think they want to, they can come Christmas Eve, half a day.
Yeah, or just take a...
Or they got a day, they can take all.
Or drop Christmas Day. I mean, it's not Christmas Day, you know?
Christmas Eve on the 24th, I mean, that would be a season holiday for... Well, I guess so. Someone...
I don't have a problem. Whatever the group has to do is fine.
Why don't we, Dawn said she sent these emails out a couple of weeks ago to everybody, and why don't we table it, and say, would you research and see if we can legally, what our legal number of holidays, holidays, I think we have some constraints there, and then we'll go from there.
I like to see more holidays.
When we're breaking the law.
Well, I certainly understand the, you got Christmas Eve and Christmas, and then you got Friday hanging there in the middle of it. It would be a great deal, and the work is going to be minimal, that's done, but we're going to have to make sure it's legal. Item 11, Dana J. Caldwell, county attorney, A, consider and adopt taking impact assessment concerning the proposed ordinance prohibiting solid waste disposal disposal.
Um, I've provided each of you with a copy of the taking's impact assessment that was done. As y'all are aware, anytime a governmental entity attempts to regulate the use of private property, we have to do a taking's assessment. And the results of that are, I shortened it, four pages. For your review, I'm asking that y'all approve that assessment. And I've also given each of you a copy of the proposed ordinance. I believe that y'all had requested this to be investigated pursuant to a permit that was requested. Yeah, I'm past that, yeah.
Yeah. Nixon, for the land application of sludge.
I've researched with other counties, I've visited with the city attorney, or emailed, received emails from him, the Nixon city attorney regarding this request. So the taking's analysis is there. I do not believe that it has an impact as far as the protection, the private property rights protection act. It doesn't impact the real estate, and that the action is exempt from the application of the act in that the, there's no inherent right to dispose of solid waste or sludge on your property. That is a prohibited act, so the county does, under the health and safety code, have the right to regulate that for the health and safety of the citizens. We ask that you note on the ordinance, it is a solid waste disposal ordinance, which includes the land application of sludge, but it also encompasses rubbish, garbage. County doesn't presently operate a landfill anymore. This would prohibit anyone else from coming in or out of anyone as well.
Without approval?
Anything would have to be permitted. And in fact, this, the, by the statute, we have to exempt already permitted uses or active administratively complete uses. And after checking with TCEQ, other than the Swenson application for the permit to do a land application, there are no permitted properties within the county. And this would prohibit there from ever being any additional permits even applied.
Since it's something you need to do.
So what I'm asking is, after your perusal, to approve the taking's impact assessment, and approve in the second half to publish notice of the ordinance. It must be published for at least two consecutive weeks, 30 days prior to court taking a vote, and they must have a public hearing. So that notice, I've also provided you with a copy of that notice, and the order of the court accepting the taking's assessment and approving their publication.
Now, this really has no bearing on the current situation with TCEQ. If they approve that, it's approved and grandfathered.
Yes, sir.
So that it's their decision at this point. This is just to prevent this sort of thing.
From happening in the... Yes, sir. In fact, the statute specifically prohibits the...
Voting Commission, why does that commission comment, all right.
And then I need it on that second one, Judge, for the public hearing.
A and B.
And 30 days out, gentleman, is going to be the 26th of August. The preceding, the first August date is within...
The first date that we could have a meeting, the public hearing?
The public hearing would have to be on the 26th, because the first August meeting is only 17, or 27 days out, yes, 27 days. So we would have to all to the 26th of August for the public hearing and your vote on the ordinance.
Sounds good to me. That's Commissioner Court.
Okay.
Do we know matter? Do we need to vote on that? We did.
We did. I just wanted to make sure you...
A and B, your motion, all right with A and B?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good work.
Item 12, Vernor Brazil, county auditor, A, information only set up a new fund sheriff's sales to receive receipts from sale and access by sheriff's office to be used at sheriff's discretion.
That is just, in the past, we've always, you know, the sheriff sells abandoned equipment or anything, we put it into the general fund and transferred it. But in this situation, I thought we could set up a separate account, and that way it would be better accounted for.
Motion, item 12, that's... Mariah's office. Information only set up a new fund, county child abuse prevention fund, to account for new fee being charged by the district clerk's office.
That is kind of in relationship to number 15 that's on there. The district clerk is charging a new fee, I think it's a hundred dollar fee for, that's being applied to sexual abuse cases, and that amount is going to be used for the child prevention. And so I've set up a separate fund for that. I've attached a copy of that, for you to view.
And item C, review and approve percentage of uncollectible per statement on auditor's standard 122.
That is just a big protocolality. We're required by the state and the audit standards to approve our uncollectible rates. And so I have given each one of y'all a list that Meyer and I got together and put together, and it's, just needs to be approved, and then I have to send it to them, so that we'll be in compliance with our audit rules.
Mr. Gomis, second. Mr. Powell, fifth. Thank you. Item 14, Larry, item 13, Paul Fow, county commissioner precinct two, presentation of Bill Burnett on Senate Bill 1747 regarding equal for shale grants available.
Do I have to move that to the budget workshop, so it can kind of tie into some of the budget workshop sign?
Okay. Then we'll move 13 to the budget workshop.
Item 14, Larry Wiley, county commissioner precinct four, discuss and approve converting two lane stop, or four-way stop at an intersection on Legacy Ranks Drive and Legacy Trail Drive. And, go ahead, you.
I had a number of complaints about the intersection. Citizens talked with one of the deputies, deputy recommended that they chat with me. I went out and looked at it. It is a place that would be desirable for a four-way stop. Talked with the sheriff to be sure that he agreed that it's something that would work for the benefit. And essentially, that's it. I'd like to convert a two-way stop to a four-way stop.
And we spoke with Mr. Caldwell, stated that in order for it to be enforceable, it needs to be put in the minutes of court.
Oh, you're not to do a study?
Um, no, I don't, not a subdivision. If it were on a, one of the county roads, it would be preferable, I think, at this point.
I know I requested one, a couple of years ago, one, they told me to do a study. I don't know.
Well, in essence, he did an informal study, so. I mean, it's, the engineering, I mean, that's like the speed limit on the roadways. But if he was removing it, it'd probably be more of an issue, but this increases the safety factor. I don't know, lawsuits should come out of it as something.
The issue, I think there's a number of issues that I've looked at, but the one in general was just to make certain, although I knew the intersection in advance, that as folks came into the subdivision, that there wouldn't be the potential of it backing up and somehow interfering with traffic on 775. And it was definitely a part of that, that is an issue. Thank you.
No, sir.
Something says four-way, you know, four-way stop on, so people know that it's not just a two-way stop.
Item 15, Arthur Lewis, Assistant DA, Children's Alliance of South Texas, the Child Child Advocacy Center, May first judicial district attorney's office, discuss and take action on potential lease of property to Child Advocacy Center, addition of juror donation to Child Advocacy Center, establishing a child abuse prevention plan based on a hundred dollar court cost assessed to sex offenders.
Judge, I'm sorry, I don't think we voted on the stop sign.
You did.
We did.
Yes. That was made a lot in.
Commissioner Fow missed it from a video.
You're voting yes.
Okay. And you did it well.
And you wish you'd tanked it.
No, that's fine. He's just trying to make it legal.
Well, you guys already voted, I'm ordering those other way to the county, and then I took the DA's office. And as you guys may or may not be aware, a court of child abuse centers, let me give you kind of a real life version of what happens day to day. Our office prosecutes all the sexual molestation of kids cases for the five counties that we cover. And practically, what that means is, for example, you know, your seven-year-old granddaughter has been molested by her stepdad. She goes to school, she may tell a friend at school. A school, her friend may tell the teacher. Teacher goes to the principal, call her...
the teacher, teacher goes to the principal, call her out, start questioning her about what kind of happened and things like that. Then what happens is, um, she may have to tell the therapist at school, she may have to tell CPS, she then has to come tell criminal investigators. And by the time we get to where we are prosecuting this person who's done this, this seven-year-old child has told the story of what has happened, um, six, seven, eight times, um, for something that is very difficult for a child to say at all, and a lot of times, they don't say anything. Um, so when a child advocacy center is, and what they do is not only educate educators, law enforcement, everyone like that, about how we need to handle and respond to that um, outcry of abuse, but also, what they do is, we have specialized interviewers who are trained in child development, who knows specifically how to ask questions about the sexual and physical abuse that happens to these children in a non-lethal way that we can use in court. It's videotaped, so that way the defendant's lawyer gets to look at it, see where this child was identified to if he went to court, and a lot of times, that's our best evidence when these guys are pleading, because they've watched this interview of what this child knows in detail of this sexual act that a normal seven-year-old would never know about otherwise. So, um, and that's what a, that's what a forensic interview is, which is what a child advocacy center is really all about, is trying to prevent this child from maybe being intimidated by a six-foot-tall criminal investigator coming in and saying, okay, you need to tell me what your stepdad did, and it's very intimidating, you know, versus someone who's specifically trained to do nothing but interview children, anywhere from the age of three, when they start talking, all the way up to seventeen, and how to do that differently. So that's what a child advocacy center is all about. What we've been doing, we don't have one. So what's been happening is, and none of our five counties have one, is we've been borrowing off everybody else. We send our kids, we were sending them to Bear County, and Bear County apparently backs up primarily, you've got so many cases, we don't have the capacity to deal with your cases. So we've been sending them to Sedeen to be interviewed, um, and they're kind of in the same boat, like, well, we've got our own cases, we'll provide these courtesy services when we can, so that is our investigation, kind of a, you know, we're giving the back burner kind of treatment. So these kids are finally saying something, and we got to talk about, hey, we need a wait about a week and a half before we're going to go talk to, you know, someone about this. So, um, what we want to do, and what we're in the process of doing, and we've gotten grant funding already, is establishing one here, and I spoke with county judges, and I told them, you know, that one of our biggest hurdles is going to be finding a building, and he had mentioned that there's a building here that may be available, so that's what we're asking you guys for. Um, I don't see any bigger benefit to our children in this county than it being here. Um, they don't have to travel to Atascosa, Atascosa's offered a building, um, but we've had a task force get together, we have board of directors all meet, um, and kind of discuss location, and everyone's kind of in agreement that they would want it here if it's available, um, because LaSalle County, we cover LaSalle and Frio as well. Well, for those kids to come here, that's hour and a half drive, which is just too far. Um, but the LaSalle County judge has offered, they renovated their courthouse, the county judges moved back into the courthouse, because old office is going to become like a satellite forensic interview, um, you know, office area. And we're also going to provide therapy with these kids. We're going to have a part-time therapist that was allotted for, in a grant that we rewarded, so that kids can not only come here to get their forensic interview, but they and their family, the non-offending family members, can come here and be, get therapy for how to cope and process with, you know, dealing with what's happened. So that is what I propose.
Precisely, the obvious, that it serves the children in, in a very professional way, the, the next thing is that by us supplying the building, uh, the other counties would be tasked to come up with the remodeling of the building.
Well, and what's happened is, we have asked, and we will, um, we've asked, LaSalle County, um, we're asking each county for twenty-five thousand dollars to assist in getting the project going. LaSalle County wrote us a seventy-five thousand dollar check and said, we want you to know that we're backing you, and, um, this is for this year and the next two years after that. Karnes County has also given us twenty-five thousand dollars, same thing. Um, and we're going to ask Atascosa and Frio as well, we haven't made it to their commissioner's court yet, but our intention is to do that. But the, um, the idea is to open the doors by September first, which puts us on a very short timeframe at this point, but, um, but that's the goal. And we have, we're posting these positions for the executive director, and the forensic interviewer, and the therapist, um, beginning this week, to try and get those people on board beginning September first, so we'll probably start offering services by the end of September.
All of the mayor's building we're talking about?
The Mary Forster building, right?
Right down, get this one.
Um, so I think it would be great, and if the library ends up being here, it'll be nice, because people won't know necessarily, because it is kind of a public road, but they won't know if the kids are here for the library, or if they're there to go over there, um, so, and kids could wait over here, you know, at the library, I don't know, I think it would be a nice, but, and then also, we're going to have a courtroom over there, so when we actually have a case that has to be tried of this nature, kids could either wait at the advocacy center that they'll be comfortable with and have been there, or, you know, for court, instead of waiting kind of in a witness room, which is not so pleasant for a kid.
I love it. Now, I know you and Dana have pitched it, have you all worked out the lease agreement?
Uh, we have, uh, at this point, uh, the, the lease agreement is a thirty-year lease, um, in the lease for a dollar a year. And, and part of that is that they're not going to be coming to this court asking for money, or something like that. And now, the, the one thing is, the building does have a roof leak and things like that, so I don't know if we want to work.
We have enough building with roof leak too, and that?
Hmm, the jail?
The jail. So probably we need to have both of them taken care of at the same time.
But I've, I've reviewed the lease, um, and it, at this point, our responsibility is in the leases, the county is to provide the building and allow them to use it for the designated purpose. The, um, child advocacy center will then maintain it upon, um, taking over the building they would maintain and do any needed repairs at, at this point, other than, I think they were asking that they would have repaired the roof.
And they'll, in that, don't get into details of them, but in that, these are some protections, you know, for the various things.
Yes, we have liability insurance.
Right, purpose, and things that come to mind that you might think of, of.
It was in the judge's packet for signature, the original lease.
And I'm pretty sure what I did is, I reached out, is there sixty-six other child advocacy centers in Texas? I reached out to, um, about five of them, that I know lease property from counties, and asked them for their lease to use as a go-by. And so this lease is, um, basically identical to the Williamson County Child Advocacy Center. It's the lease that they came up with, with their county petition.
And there is a copy of that lease in your packet.
It's sad that we need something like this, but.
It is sad, but I mean, I wanted to give you guys, because we just did numbers, um, to, that we have to provide for grant purposes. Twenty-eleven, we had forty-eight criminal cases, CPS had two-hundred-and-fifty. That's just for Wilson County.
That's not including the juvenile offenders.
Just juvenile offenders.
Right.
The offenders, the juvenile offenders. This year alone, we've had twenty-five, and CPS has had thirty-five. Just twenty-thirteen, we're halfway through. Last year, we had thirty-seven criminal investigations, CPS had a hundred and three.
And we've had about eight juvenile offenders, sexually assaulted, other children.
That's just this county, and we've got five counties. So, and they'll all be utilizing this forensic interview.
And we, we think how much we appreciate the efforts you've put into all this, this stuff. I know you've been working on it for quite a while.
Oh, yes.
Very adamantly, and, and.
What is it going to take to get that building like y'all wanted, or what is it?
Well, and that is, and if you guys are contractors, because, I mean, we've, we've got some money, but obviously, we've got to pay salaries to these folks coming in too, who have very tough jobs, so we're trying to reach out to as many contractors to do as much of it for as little price, as little price as possible, but it's for classrooms. Um, and so what we're, we need is two interview rooms. So those interview rooms have to be soundproof, um, to where nothing can be heard outside that room. And then what happens is, the interviewer's in there with the child, law enforcement CPS sits in another room and watches it on the screen, and there's like an audio feed into the interviewer's ear, so that way, if there's something that CPS hears, or the criminal investigator hears, and they say, well, and then he touched me here, but then the child keeps talking about their stuff, before they quit, they want to be able to say, hey, and they can talk into that interviewer's ear and say, hey, you know, ask him about the ecstasy. So we need two interview rooms, so that that way, we can have two interviewers going at the same time. Um, and then we're also going to need, I'm estimating, four offices, four offices, um, in that space, so.
So is that something we have to do?
I don't know. We would, we'll, we're going to be digging for funds to try to figure out how we're going to get that renovated, but, and hopefully.
So y'all have a contractor do all the stuff?
Yeah, we'll take care of kind of renovating it.
We just have to fix the lease.
Right.
And it's a memory, getting up in a scene somewhere of that metal thing. Motion Commissioner Gammet, Commissioner Wylie, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate. I wanted to just throw in, um, oh, I mean, the court has approved the creation of the account, but they haven't approved the collection of the fee.
Oh, okay.
Um.
I think they did.
I think we did that, but.
Under that section of the code, there's a section.
We did that, yeah, the heading.
Well, I think we, I think.
Well, the previous entry was a fee, I think.
Yeah, we do that sometime back, didn't we?
That hundred dollars, the district clerk? She came in and asked for another fee, it was a six-dollar fee, but I don't think the district clerk did that.
The district clerk has a different fee than she's putting up, it's not the one that.
Right, this is a different one. The other one's an RPM.
She told me the court.
Yeah, that's just separate.
Court, she said it was a state band, it's a mandatory.
It is, it does say that they should, um, and under the code, I did provide each of you a copy of the code provision that, um, is for the collection of the, it is, it is, um, under the purview of the court, how to disperse any of that fee. So I think that that's one of the things that Audrey, in the district attorney's office, is requesting, is that the court approve the use of that fee for, for the child advocacy center.
Right, and, well, and I would like it, I mean, I think it needs to stay as that code reads, it needs to stay as a child prevention fund. So obviously, some, a lot of what the child advocacy center does is, children have already been abused, but also, what we want to do as part of that is, we want them to do outreach to kids, because, I mean, and this is probably some detail that you guys need to know, but, I mean, I had victims, nine-year-old girl who was biologically molested by her biological father for two years. When I met with her, she said, I didn't know that it was wrong, because this is the way that I've grown up. So part of it is to educate these kids, good touch, bad touch, kind of thing like that, so that they understand that. And she said, at school, whenever someone, we had a talk in health classes, when I realized it was wrong. So it's just very sad, but it's something that, I mean, this fund, that, that hundred dollars is only taxed onto court costs for sex offenders. So it's that limited target independent, and so what, who would be taxed with that than someone who's done it? So, um, so that's kind of my opinion on that. I did forget to add, the other thing on the agenda was the donation, um, the juror donation. I wanted to see if we could add the child advocacy center on there. Under, um, under the code criminal procedure, any program approved by the commissioner's court, um, that's nonprofit, which is newer, nonprofit five oh one two three, that's already been established, um, we can ask that jurors who come in, you know, how they can donate their service fee to a, you know, there's a couple of other agencies, we wanted to add the child advocacy center on there, that they can donate.
One of them, Child Protective Services now, and the other one is, uh, the Victor Crown. Those are the two that's on there now.
And Guadalupe Valley, I mean, Guadalupe is on there, right?
I don't know.
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
It's those two.
Um, and we can make sure that that gets on the next agenda for the ultimate cast. It's, it's not a legitimate, you can't.
Is it?
Yes, it is.
It's on, it's on, it's on, it's the, um, it's on fifteen.
It's on fifteen?
Oh, okay, that's, okay. And you can take pictures, I can see that.
After one week, you bought it?
No, not yet.
You did.
They did.
You did.
Oh, did you? Yes, okay. Are you? I saw you.
We're more efficient than we know.
Okay, so the additional that's.
All right, thank you very much. Item sixteen, Ann Harvard, Wilson County Treasurer, review the request delay of the thirty-hour rule.
It's just information, it's been delayed till thirty-hour rule of, um, part-timers having to stay twenty hours, twenty-nine hours or less in order not to be considered full-time employees, has been delayed till January first of two thousand and fifteen.
So part-timers can work six hours?
Mine can, no. Whoa, not more than thirty-nine.
Yeah, that's, that's when now?
January the first, two thousand and fifteen.
So the whole year.
So what we have is until, like, July the first of next year, and then we have to cut it down for that six-month period, is that right?
Right, right.
Okay, what did you say, they can only work thirty-nine?
Yep, thirty-nine hours. If they work forty, they're considered full-time, and you have to put them on the entrance. That's always.
So we got a year and a half on it now.
I think my girls are okay.
We're just.
They're going to leave on Friday at four o'clock.
Six months.
I didn't take that from December.
Yeah, but, but you have six months prior to.
Look back, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm reviewing that, and we had discussed it, and that we need to review, and I haven't had a chance to review it, so, but, um, as far as your looking back, um, there's, there are three different options on that, and I'll, I'll get a little bit of the general, and then I'd like you to part-time.
I'm going to go back to part-time.
All right, moving on to item seventeen, Anne Hodge, GMC, temporary water. Are those, uh, informational?
So Jan, yours was just informational?
Item, item A, item one is Hunt Oil, A is one H, and A is B, one H, at County Road two fifty-two precinct two. And two is Hunt Oil, Duke, B, one H, Duke C is one H, at County Road two twenty-eight precinct two. And Commissioner File says those are informational. And then, uh, item B, utility lines, one, number four seventy-two, Pullman Road, eighty-seven, Southern Spring Water Supply Precinct three. Motion Commissioner, Marilla, second, Commissioner Gammet, all in favor? And, uh, on item two, it'd be four seventy-three, County Road three forty-two, Southern Spring Water Supply Precinct three. Motion Commissioner Marilla, second, Commissioner Wylie, all in favor? All right. Okay, item C, non-standard plant variants, item one, two fifty-four, Broken Arrow Thomas Flower, precinct two, discussing A.
This came up, uh, to the subdivision committee or the Wilson County Development Review Committee last week, and I think this is precinct one.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Anyway, it's in precinct one, Joe, it's not in precinct two. Uh, this was a cleanup action, uh, there was some land sales going on, and the original plant was a certain way, but they had sold part of it off, and this was more or less a cleanup action, and it came out with a favorable view to move forward, we had to get the, this piece of property, not cleaned up physically, but plating and most of the money.
Motion Commissioner Gammet, second, Commissioner File off there. Item two, one ninety-three, Longhorn, Mary Holland, precinct three, discussing A.
This was a piece of property in Longhorn, in Longhorn subdivision, that a lady and gentleman needed help with taking care of their property, so they had a family or a smaller people that were going to move in out there, but they wanted to give them two acres and, uh, of the property, and it was quite large enough for, for all of that, and that was a favorable review also.
Motion Commissioner Wylie, second, Commissioner Marilla, or last person?
Who's?
Commissioner Marilla, the Commissioner Wylie, all in favor? Item B, all touching in RV car, FM nineteen twenty-two, reviewing approved.
This one is, then, Commissioner Box.
Yes, sir. Commissioner File, motion, Commissioner Gammet, second, all in favor? Now, you want to talk? Now, you want to talk? Thank you for being here.
Sing a song or something if you want.
You don't want that, trust me.
Okay, eighteen, is that the budget workshop that we want? Go ahead and finish your resume. Item nineteen, minutes, everybody have an opportunity to read the minutes. Motion, Commissioner Wilding, Second, Commissioner Gomis, all three. Financial report, item twenty.
Is this pink there?
Okay, you sent, we sent the memo, and everybody wrote?
Okay, what is what we all, one and one, fair roll, personal thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Samuel Emerson was hired, six twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen, Department four, twenty-two thousand dollars a month as a correction officer. Jaron Gonzalez resigned, six twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen, Department one sixty, part-time road hand, precinct three. Ken Miller is going to be receiving a raise on seven one, two thousand and thirteen, Department one eighty, to one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month as road and bridge hand number four. Benny Brooks is going to receive a promotion. He's going to go from part-time to full-time, Department one sixty, as of July the first, two thousand and thirteen. His salary will be two thousand forty-seven dollars and seven cents a month, part-time to full-time road hand, bridge number three. William Mainz is the same thing.